Yeah, just put it in.
Ooh.
And by the way, I should mention that Mayor Alves is under the weather tonight, so that's why you're getting the second string running the gavel tonight.
Second string, yes.
Justin City can hear you guys.
You can hear us, I can't hear Ann.
He says he has nothing for you on my end.
Very good.
So you get to go.
Okay.
Okay, ready? Okay. I'd like to declare open this city council, the City of Escalon meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Would you please join me in this salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic of which stands the one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Higgins?
Here.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Swift?
Here.
Mayor Alves. He's absent excuse.
Absent excuse.
I'm here too.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Crummick.
And by the way, on that note, Councilmember Crummick, welcome back from the two-week stint training army.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Uh, let's go, we have a couple of presentations tonight. Uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Flores at this time for those presentations.
Thank you, sir. Uh, city council, uh, city mayor manager, I'm gonna introduce, um, two officers today. One's gonna be a full-time officer that converted from, uh, reserve to full-time, but because of COVID, we weren't able to do the pinning. Officer Rodriguez, uh, is accompanied by his wife Maria Alcala Rodriguez, his son, or their son, Emiliano Rodriguez, his father, Jesus Rodriguez Contreras, and his mother, Anna Ramirez Rodriguez. Okay, at this time, who's gonna pin you, sir? Well, Mr. Rodriguez comes from Stockton, started his career in Stockton, um, but he found his happy forever home, hopefully with the City of Escalon, Escalon Police Department. He's originally from Santa Ana, California, moved to San Mateo, but now resides in, uh, in Stockton. And that. I wasn't ready for that one. Shut up on me on that. All right, uh, the second officer I'm gonna introduce today, he's a reserve officer, is Officer John Walls. He, uh, he's from Modesto, born and raised in Modesto, um, accompanied by his wife, Maria Walls, uh, the three daughters, Melissa Walls, Melanie Walls, and Madeline Walls. Also, uh, present is gonna be his father, John Walls Senior, his mother, Jackie Walls, and brother, Daniel Walls. Okay, um, again, both of these gentlemen graduated from the Delta Academy in San Joaquin County, and, uh, we're proud to have those two gentlemen. So at this time.
Mm-hmm.
Can you pin you, my wife? Okay?
Walls, yeah.
And that's it for me.
Okay, well. Well, I tell you, Officer Rodriguez and Reserve Officer Walls, it's gonna be great having you on the force, and, uh, congratulations, and I know, uh, it'll be a great experience for you guys, and I know you'll be definite additions, uh, to the City of Escalon as well. Congratulations. And I also appreciate the big crowds that both you guys brought with you. Um, you're under no obligation to stay for the rest of the meeting, however, if you would like to stay, this is probably the meeting to stay for, 'cause it looks like we don't have a big agenda, so. Now, we're gonna do and dive into right now, the consent calendar. Uh, these items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. For example, uh, regarding item number two, I will be abstaining from check numbers nine, eight, seven, four, and seven, seven, five, six, two.
I'd like to pull three, to see what.
I'd like to, uh, move to, uh, make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Um, I'd like to.
Okay, yeah, we'll just wait a second.
Yeah. They wanna stay for the meeting.
Councilmember, uh, uh, Higgins, uh, you've pulled item number three.
Number three.
There is a motion to accept items not one and two on the consent calendar. I would need a second.
Second that.
Motion's been second to approve, uh, consent calendars, items one and two. We'll proceed directly to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes five oh. Hey, regarding item number three, Councilmember Higgins, you had a few questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a little more clarity on the circumstances that are surrounding that. Uh, I was reading through what we were provided, and I really couldn't understand. If one understood, basically, a tree limb fell on the car. Is that, do you know any more of the circumstances behind that? Like, was it a negligent trimming scenario, or like, uh?
No, so our, our Ames, which is our, uh, insurance adjuster, risk management adjuster, had followed up with city staff, asking for information regarding our scheduling for tree trimming, whether or not trees in that area had any history of falling or had been reported as an issue before. Um, and, and none of those things had a record. We did have record of trimming them in accordance with standards required for tree trimmings and things like that. And so, in order for that, uh, for the city to be responsible or have liability related to something like that, the damage must be caused by a dangerous condition of public property that creates a reasonably foreseeable risk. And so, he recommended that city council reject the claim pursuant to government code section eight-three-five and eight-three-five point two.
Is, is the, um, the person filing the claim here? Are they, would you, would you hear their story? Okay, they're not even here.
Uh, filing the claim at city level, uh, what it does is, is begins a clock, um, for them to submit additional information or file an additional claim. And so, it's my understanding that something can still be worked out after the fact. We're just trying to start a clock moving forward on that. Either time if the decision changes of council, we can adjust that then.
As far as you're aware, the person involved is not here to defend themselves, right?
I mean, and that's not my understanding of the process, so no, I don't believe they are.
Okay. I truly hate to criticize staff when, in, in the public here, but the idea that it might come back, um, it will not come back unless something particular comes up. This is the time to address it. Certainly, the council can postpone this or move it to another agenda if they wanted additional information. But I just didn't want, s- sorry.
That's always been my understanding.
Right.
No, I was just looking for more clarity, not, I wasn't pointing fingers or anything.
Right.
Just looking more, for more clarity and understanding. Obviously, i- if it's not that important to them, they would be here, you know, most likely, unless they're not aware of it.
And because it's filed through our risk management insurance company, where the city staff and the city are not the ones that keep in contact with the claimant, it is the insurance company, our insurance company.
And they would be aware of it, right, correct, that this would be here today?
Uh, that I, I would have to confirm. Um, that's, that's not typically the, the understanding that I've had of it in the past. Um, the main priority of, of rejecting the claim is to start a forty-five day. We have to reject it within forty-five days to start a, uh, like a statute of limitations.
Gotcha, so, so assuming that happens today, right? And does that go back, uh, that, that person involved, I think Daniel Mello, it would be able to then, um, come forward and say something if they wanted to?
No, now would be the time. What's gonna happen is if the city council rejects the claim tonight, then they'll get a letter from us indicating the claim has been rejected on tonight. That letter then gives them notice that the clock starts ticking for them to file a lawsuit. Since we're denying the claim, they have then six months in which to file a lawsuit from the denial of the claim. So, um, we, so you're hearing different numbers up here. The law says when you get a claim, you should, it's supposed to come bef- before council within forty-five days. If you, if there's no response to that person within forty-five days, it's deemed denied. That's what that forty-five clock day is. But we really want it usually before, and obviously, we bring it before you to discuss it. Sometimes, there's just not enough information, so the city council could put it over. Um, in this case, it sounded like we had information on the tree maintenance, so there's nothing to, uh, do, and the insurance company recommend denial, or a risk manager recommended denial. So, they would get a notice of a denial, and then it would be up to them to, in this case, it's small claims amount, they could file a small claims action against the city if they believe so, if they wanted to.
All right, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Or, Councilmember Higgins, are you satisfied with, uh, the answers?
Yeah, I think, I think so. I just was, wanted to make sure we weren't, um, throwing someone under the bus who hasn't had a chance to, you know, or has opportunity to speak up.
So, for the point of clarification, almost sounds like we have three choices here. We can either reject the claim for damages, um, we can accept the claim for damages.
Correct.
Uh, or do nothing. And therefore, by default, we are rejecting the claim as well.
Right, but if you're gonna do nothing, that's a rejection. I'd recommend making that rejection motion, and so the clock can start ticking.
Gotcha.
There's another one on there that's called compromising the claim, which just means settlement of the claim versus accept deny. There's the middle ground of settle the claim. Um, right, there's, so there was a fourth option in there, essentially.
All right, no worries. Well, council members, I do need to have a, uh, motion in some direction to, uh, go forth on this matter.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if, um, since it has been pulled and we're essentially in normal agendized, we should make, see if there's any members of the public that wanna speak on it.
Good, good point. Uh, out there in, uh, if anybody can hear us, are, is there any input that we'd like to get? And then I wanna get some input from the audience too, if there is any. Audience, would anybody like to come up and give their input on this item? Okay, in that case, at this point, I will take it back to the council. Councilmembers?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move on staff's recommendation to reject the claim for damages.
I would second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded to reject the claim for damages filed by Daniel A. Mello. Uh, is there any discussion of the item on the table? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero.
Um, just abstain from it.
I wanna say.
Yeah. And another point of clarification, uh, earlier this evening, 'cause I'm a little rusty on this, I do believe that items one or two, I announced that they were approved five to oh, and it's four to oh.
And I wrote it down that way, yes, a little mark, Mayor Alves.
Okay. Staff communications. Dominique?
I'm gonna have Claire go first. Good evening, council. Um, I have a couple of things for you. Um, first of all, I wanted to mention, thank you for approving the, um, check registers. In those check registers includes, um, a prepayment of the CalPERS employer portion, the unfunded liability portion. Um, and I just wanted to mention that, as you've done in the past years, by prepaying it, you save money. So, um, that payment saved you nearly twenty thousand dollars by paying it in advance. I just wanted to mention that staff, um, did a great job getting that moved along. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is, um, at the last council meeting, there was discussion about the, um, surface water project. And I have some notes on that, I've done a little bit of research, um, and I've lost my notes, Dominique. Hold please. Um. Come back to me if you could. So I wanna follow up with that, I've got a few different items here. First item is election update. Um, so as you're aware, the nomination period, um, the first nomination period expired, um, last Friday, the thirteenth at five P.M. However, um, incumbent Robert Swift did not issue papers for his position, and because of that.
Yeah, I was gonna make a big announcement too, but you just.
I had to take your, uh. Yeah, and so, um, because Councilmember Swift did not pull, uh, for reelection, the period does get extended an additional five days. So if anybody is interested in running for office, the extension, uh, will be active until this Wednesday, August seventeenth at five P.M. And so, if you come in, get your paperwork situated, um, and then have you submitted, and as long as we submit you over to the county elections office, um, you will be reviewed, um, to see if you qualify. Uh, currently, candidates that have been qualified as of five P.M. today, um, is, is candidate Jeremy Engel for a four-year term, um, existing or incumbent Peter Crummick for a four-year term, uh, candidate Melinda Walker for a four-year term, um, incumbent Edward Alves, four-year term, uh, candidate Elsa Sandoval, two-year term, uh, incumbent Andrew Thomas Hagan, four-year term, candidate Kurt Danzinger, two-year term, candidate Sherry Gail Hill, two-year term. And then we also, those, those are all the candidates that have been qualified at this time. And then we have two other candidates that have pooled papers, candidate Ryland Butler and candidate Sean M. Stroman. And then they will have until this Wednesday at five P.M. if they wanna pursue running for council. And anybody else who's interested, so, if anybody's interested, please give City Hall a call or swing by between the office hours of eight A.M. to five P.M., and we can get you situated with that. Um, and that's our update for elections. The next update we have, um, we do have a meeting, our next meeting wa- is going to fall on a holiday, September fifth, which is Labor Day, Monday, September fifth. Um, and so, we typically will move the meeting over to Tuesday, September sixth. However, staff at this time does not have any foreseeable items that are scheduled for that meeting. And so, like the last time we did this, um, if you, if council is okay with going dark on that week, unless items come up that need to be discussed, um, that would be great. We can work on getting things ready for the next meeting, which I believe is the twentieth. Um, and so, if you guys could provide a consensus on that, either, either way, we could have the meeting, but it would probably be short like this one, unless something comes up.
Yeah, uh, councilmembers, thoughts in either direction? Councilmember, uh, Higgins?
No, I'm fine with how, however you guys wanna run it.
Okay, Councilmember Crummick?
Yeah, if the, if the staff doesn't have anything for us, then that's fine, we can push it.
Okay, your thoughts, Councilmember Bellinger?
I would agree, if there's nothing pressing, then we can move to the next one. I'm, I'm good with that as well. If something comes up, then obviously, we should have a meeting, but if it doesn't, then.
And that's what we'll do, I will send out an email to sta- or to council, letting you know, um, if it's gonna be canceled or if we're gonna end up at a meeting as soon as we're aware. Um, and it would typically be something that needs immediate action.
Sure.
At this time, it would probably be election-related, um, at this point. And so, if it's not required, we won't have that meeting, but if it is, we will.
Very good.
Very good. Did you find your group? Claire's ready? My apologies, I'm sorry. Um, so at the council meeting, last meeting on August first, there were questions raised regarding the surface water loans entered into by the city and ongoing funding for the surface water project. So I did a little bit of research, as you know, I'm fairly new here. Um, much of the information that addresses both of those two funding questions were addressed in the water rate studies of two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen, which were both approved by council through a two nineteen, two eighteen process. The City of Escalon joined South San Joaquin Irrigation District, S.S.J.I.D., in two thousand three. They paid one point, almost one point seven million dollars, and that was for their share of existing water system infrastructure costs. Um, this money was made possible through a loan wi- from West America Bank, dated July first, two thousand three. Payments were made from two thousand four through two thousand thirteen, using receipts from the Tracy sale of water. Um, and operating funds is needed to cover the annual debt payments, and that was in the rate study of two thousand fifteen. No customer rate increases were made for those payments. The loan is completely paid off. The city continues to receive payments from Tracy for the sale of water. It's about, it's just under a hundred and fi- five thousand a year. After completion of that loan, tho- these monies have been set aside in a surface water connection fund, a separate fund within the water fund. And at six thirty twenty-two, um, the accumulation is eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand five ninety-five. So these monies are to be used for the connection to S.S.G., S.S.J.I.D.'s water system. They could be used for other surface water capital projects or even operations in the future. The estimated cost of the surface water connection project is around ten point four million dollars, and that's in the two thousand nineteen rate study, table five. Um, the surface water connection project has not yet begun, as the design is being reevaluated to meet expectations of S.S.J.I.D. in the city. So the connection project is expected to be underway in two thousand twenty-four or twenty-five. Um, by that time, the water reserve is expected to be, um, over, a little over a million dollars from connection fees and a little over a million dollars from the buildup of cash, which is that Tracy water sale. Um, these funds are part of the reserves identified as restricted for capital projects in the city's audited financial statements of the water fund. So the rate study assumes that those connection fees will be charged through the permitting process and will reside in the capital fund to be used for the project. And that is in the two thousand nineteen rate study. The remaining amount needed for the surface water connection project, which is more than eight million dollars, is expected to be provided by debt. So the water rates established in two thousand nineteen water study do not include collection of revenue from water usage rates to pay for debt services associated with the project, but they, in the, in the current, but they do include those, um, in two thousand twenty-five, when it is anticipated that the first loan payments might be due. So in table six of the two thousand nineteen study, it shows those rates increasing for that debt repayment, but not until two thousand twenty-five. The surface water connection project has been part of the city's plan for many years and have been included in the last two rate studies. Within the city updates for water rates, which is anticipated to occur in two thousand twenty-four, these rates for surface water connection project will also be updated as the construction of the project is planned to begin about that time. So I hope that answers the two questions on funding. One is loan done, one is, um, whether we're collecting those funds and holding them for this project, which we are.
Very good, thank you, Claire.
And I'm gonna piggyback off of, uh, her comments. She, she covered the finance end, and I'll cover the, the project end. Um, we have been in discussions with S.S.J.I.D., we have met with them as well regarding the project. Um, originally, council had approved for option C, um, and after meeting with them and discussing that project in more detail with everyone present, um, at this time, our engineer is saying that option C appears to be the option that we're gonna maintain with. Um, however, S.S.J.I.D. is working on revisions of cost estimates on the project, um, because some things have changed since the last time they provided a breakdown to us. And so, once we receive those, we're gonna review that, apply it to the rate study that's approved, um, and make sure we have everything connected. And so, we just wanna make sure we're gathering all of that information before we move forward. Um, so they're gonna provide us cost estimates. Um, we're gonna also update, um, they have an existing E.I.R. from their establishment that they've allowed us to, uh, utilize as a starting point for when we start moving forward on environmental, 'cause that's probably gonna take twelve to eighteen months to complete preliminary before a project can move forward. Um, and so, once we get a grasp on those items, um, we'll be moving forward with the, uh, mapping, boundary surveying, and a preliminary alignment study to make sure that we're able to utilize the county right-of-way, um, for the, the entire extension and find out what we need to do, um, to address any issues that come down as we're going through that area, 'cause a lot of this is outside of city limits, um, as well as connected to S.S.J.I.D., obviously. So, we'll keep you updated on that. Um, that's the big-ticket item right now, is those cost estimates, um, and then seeing where we'll move forward from those.
So some version of option C is still good to go?
That's, that's our understanding, yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, after, after getting everybody together in one room, and, and I realized not being able to meet in person over the last year or so has, has probably put a hiccup in a lot of things. You have, we have multiple people involved in the project, multiple positions on both sides. Um, they've got a staff of at least six people that were present, we've got a staff, four of us that were present, and it's getting everybody in the same room to understand the project and make sure everything's clear. And so, we worked out everything with them in a, in a workshop session, basically. So we'll be moving forward, and if there's any significant changes, um, on that item, we'll be bringing them back to council for review and potential action.
Dominique, Claire, thank you very much, uh, good work on that item, it's an important one, and so it's good to see that, uh, the juggernaut might be finally broken a little bit, and we're inching forward on that one again. Well, what else you have?
Do you have any other updates?
Moment, I, we do have a future presentation of, uh, other staff, but that's only for the nineteenth.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay.
I, I have a question on the, that one item with the surface water, if, if I may. Okay, so just, just to be clear, so everybody out there in the audience knows, so, so we understand, we've already, uh, approved rate increases that will reflect the, the cost involved with connecting to S.S.J.I.D., is that correct?
Yes, but those rates will not be impacted until two thousand twenty-five, except for connection fees, which are already in, in line. So we charge a connection fee.
Okay, so what fee is new in two thousand twenty-five?
Usage fees, so your water usage.
Okay, so water usage fees are set to go up in two thousand twenty-five?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Because of the connection to the S.S.J.I.D.?
To pay for the debt associated with that, yes.
But at this point, we don't even, we're not even working with S.S.J.I.D. to connect to a pipeline?
We are working on the plans.
We're working on the plans?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause the, the last I heard is that they made a big payment for their, you know, retirement or, or, or whatever they had, and it's kind of stalled out. So, in my mind, we don't have a solid plan to connect with S.S.J.I.D. and get that water down the line from Woodward Reservoir.
Council already proved that.
Yeah.
So the option C was already approved. Uh, we did run into a stumbling block back in October, um, when all of the staff met together and discussed things, and S.S.J.I.D. had certain criteria, um, that it was believed that the city might not be able to accommodate or be able to do.
Right.
But since we have met with them and, and rehashed everything, our engineer feels like, and is, and is positive that we will be able to make this project work, and he can make these minor tweaks is what they are at this point, to make that project move forward.
With S.S.J.I.D.?
With S.S.J.I.D.
Okay, because the only thing I'm thinking is, we've approved increases to the people that live here for that future project, we're charging them more, we're taking more money from them for this project that we say is going to happen. We need to deliver on that project, we need to make sure that S.S.J.I.D. and the City of Escalon come together in an agreement that fits that budget, that fits those increases that we've already allocated. Otherwise, what happens? Because I can see this going two ways. I can see this going the good way, where it works out, and we've allocated correctly, and we've increased things correctly, and everything pencils out. But I can also see it going sideways, where S.S.J.I.D., uh, backs out of the deal, and we are not able to connect to that surface water, and yet, we've already increased these prices. So I just want to put that out there.
So we are in an existing agreement to them, what we've already bought into the system. system.
Well, we bought into the system, but I'm talking about the connection, as opposed to just, you know, they're buying our...
They can't, they can't back out.
Yeah, they...
The only, the question is how much and time. It's just how much it's going to cost to physically connect.
Okay.
And we know the cost estimate is already just told it's going to go up, they're going to get us another cost estimate.
Of course.
Of course. But they can't back out.
Okay.
So they're, yeah, so option two that you were talking about really doesn't exist.
That's, that's fine, and, and I just want to throw this out there, that as, as a sort of fiduciary body that's looking out for the taxpayers' money that live in this town, and, and we say, "We're going to charge you more for this future project," if we can't deliver on that, then we're not delivering on, on, on this office, and, and we're not delivering on what we've said. So I just want to be very clear that if we can connect to SSJID and surface water, that is a good thing for this community. That is a good thing for California. We've got a massive drought going on right now that people probably don't want to recognize, but, man, it has not rained for a long time, and we are pumping water out of the ground. And it would be a great thing to accomplish. Option C is, right, we had option A, the, the luxury model, we had B, now we're down to C, but I don't want this to be one of those government projects where it goes sideways, it ends up costing the taxpayer a lot of money, and we can't deliver on what we said. And so, I, I just want to make sure that we're on top of this, and hopefully, this comes to fruition the way we envision it, and SSJID is on board, and that we can make this thing happen, and it's not at the demise of the constituent, the taxpayer, the person who lives in this town.
Well, it sounds a lot more like, and you're right, about a month ago, I think things were a little more up in the air with the plan that we had, in fact, chosen. But now, it sounds like, but now we're in a better spot to be able to, right, fulfill that promise, and hopefully fulfill it with, within the fiscal parameters that you're talking about, so, and that's really good news. Does, does council have any other questions under staff communications?
And we are going to, just so you're aware, as we get closer to having all of our information together, staff will be looking into applying for grants as well for this type of project. And so, we already have some grants in mind, like a small communities grant. There's also the local groundwater basin association that offers grants, and so we have those on the radar to where we get to that point where we're able to apply. We're going to start putting in applications and trying to obtain some type of grant funding to help fund the project, if possible.
Right, right, sounds good. Any other questions, council staff communications?
None, good.
Anybody out there have any thoughts on the specific items that we just talked about? Nope? Okay, then we're going to go on to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda. Oh, we do have another one.
One more, I forgot.
Sorry about that.
I'll write this down really quick.
What you got?
One item we wanted to provide an update on as well is, we did receive a code enforcement complaint today regarding a new smoke shop that has opened in the town. It does have a business license. It was issued to them as a tobacco smoke shop, and upon receiving the complaint today, it has been determined that the signage outside of the building does not meet city code regulations, and so we have reached out to the property owner to advise that. And so, that building should be taken care of in the next few days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Matters presented from the audience, the public may address the city council on any, any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the City of Escalon, excuse me, of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded, unfortunately, to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is a discretionary decision made by mayor, or I guess tonight, mayor pro temp. So who would like to come up and say their piece?
My name is Anne Chaddix, and I want to, I want to share with you my thoughts on senior housing. You all know what we've asked for. You, you all know that that's been a burning desire of us, of ours, to have senior housing. The more I think about it, and I've talked with the seniors, I've talked with staff people, I've consulted with other people, and I think I really want you to listen to this. There has been changes, come so fast. We first asked for senior housing, and before it really got out there, what we were actually looking for, the Irwin Project came in. So all of a sudden, people now think what we're asking for is the same thing that you just turned down. There's also been a change of staff here, and who would have guessed? Change in the economy. There have been so, in fact, I think we've even had a change of one board member here. So there's been change after change after change, and is it my feeling, after giving it so much thought and consulting with so many people, that if it were presented today, it probably would not pass? So I am suggesting that the council consider something. Take a deep breath. Just wait a little bit. If anything is out there, if we're hearing from anybody, keep it going. But then, the first of the year, start over. Have a meeting, but first and most importantly, let's figure out a way to communicate with the members of this community, so they know exactly what we're asking for, and what are exactly what the need is. And it might be that we have to develop a new RFP. So what? If we have to do all of that to do it right, that is my suggestion, and I'm supported in that suggestion. I really sincerely believe that putting a little time, taking a deep breath, starting over, will give us the leverage we need to succeed. I'm asking you to sincerely consider that, and whatever you do, you continue in your positions to support senior housing. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Thank you very much. Probably ideally under council communications, yeah.
Al Bellinger, I'm here for the American Legion tonight. I just want to inform everybody, this coming Saturday is our typical third Saturday of the month, dinner at our American Legion Hall. This dinner happens to be deep-fried fish. It'll be a fish dinner with all the fixing to go with it. It's at our, our American Legion Hall, which is across from the library. It starts at five o'clock, and anybody attending, I would suggest be there pretty close, to five. We have a lot of fish, it, it is fresh fish. So I'd just like anybody that wants to show up, show up. We don't charge, we do have donation cans at each table, and we do hope that somebody puts some money in it. And you can, if nobody else here, you can ask my son how much it's hard.
Fish is fried, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially you, Robert.
Well, I was, can I ask him what kind of fish? I really, it matters.
Fresh bass.
Bass?
Bass.
Like sea bass, striper bass?
Oh, I mean, lake bass, getting picky now.
Are you catching it?
Not him. I've fished with him, he can't catch anything.
Oh.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
That's Georgia, this guy's flat out of the waterfall.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
My name is Suzanne Tangleson, and I'm, I'm not sure what to do. In my backyard, there was a possum, I kid you not, this big. I called the city, I went down River World, where we have animal control. Everyone said, "We, we don't do that, we don't take care of that." What do I do? I have a dog. One thing I don't ever leave outside is water, because I know they're attracted to water. Every animal, human being, needs some water. I don't leave food out there, but there was this possum just looking at me, and I didn't want to try to scare him away and hurt him. Eventually, after a couple of days, he went away. I know he wasn't dead, and I know he must have been either rabid or something, because as far as I know, they're nocturnal, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay, so what would a person do in that? I can't lift that or go by him, and he might bite my nose off.
Don't play with it, yeah.
Yeah, I hate to throw that to the chief, but what would animal control do in that situation?
So, we don't normally respond, pick up foxes, possums, anything like that. We usually refer to property owner to contact a removal service, and they come out and pick up the, the animal and take it to wherever they take it, but we normally don't do that. We only pick up dogs, cats, and occasionally a rabbit, but not possums.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, go ahead. Oh, you would, yeah, you might know, yeah. That's right.
Have you contacted Stanislaus Wildlife Center by chance?
You know, I think I did, but I can't say for sure, because they addressed that, but I couldn't get help from anywhere.
Because you can pick up Havahar traps, they're like big traps.
Yeah, oh, that, that's true.
Laced trap it, and then...
I can transport it, no.
Yeah, well, if you can get it in a trap, then you should be able to transport it, or if you need help lifting it, just call me at the office, I'll help you, but...
Thank you.
Basically, you just trap it and then transplant it to Stanislaus Wildlife Center typically.
I mean, they won't hurt it, like, or put it down or anything like that.
No, not, no, no.
No.
Typically, they don't, they don't typically do that. They rehabilitate them typically and then re-release someone where they should be.
Thank you. I know that's not in the whole scheme of things, it's not the most important thing, but it is, it was to me. My little dog wouldn't go out, and you take care of him, so, thank you.
Almost maybe on the, the mouth and the teeth, yeah.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they are.
Hello, my name is Jamie Butler, and I have two retail stores on Main Street, and hopefully in October, we'll have a restaurant, my husband's doing. And I'm just here today to ask what the ordinance is closing Main Street for an event.
Maybe you fell into Dominique or Chief?
So it's a, depending on what type of event it is, it would be, it's a special event which has an application, and so as a part of the application, if you're closing down the street, you would go to a door and collect signatures. And then, depending on where that leaves off, I'm not absolutely sure.
How did, like, Park Feet do it?
Or... Park, Park Feet fills out all the information on the application. I would have to double-check and see what, where we go from there, but typically, if it, if it meets criteria and they're able to close it off, and you're still able to make it around, and it doesn't block it off to where, like in the downtown area, is grid streets, and so you block off a portion, but you're still able to access the next street over and pull around, that you're able to, to do it as long as it's temporary and done appropriately.
I think the spirit of that, obtaining the signatures from everybody down, all the businesses down Main Street, is that so that they're made fully aware that, hey, you know, we're, we're applying to have a date, you know, to have an event on such and such date, and therefore, the streets will be closed at such and such time. So that's the spirit of that, so that's why it's required that they talk to somebody, you know, each business owner, and have them sign off, so that the city knows, the business owner is aware that this might happen. Of course, that's an early stage of the approval process, so that's why I keep saying "might happen," so.
So if I may, section, if you go online on the internet and you just go Google Escalon municipal code, it's section nine point three-six, and it gives a list of the application, the fee, what's considered a special event, what's not. And then, after you review section nine point three-six, just come to the counter here, they'll have an application for, and be able to answer your questions.
Well, we're, it's adversely affecting our businesses, it's like excessive periods of time. They close both sides of the road for through traffic, and so, say, like Park Feet, for instance, Sunday after Park Feet, the street was left closed the whole day after all the vendors were no longer there, and it's on one side of the street only, so there's no need to have the through-traffic closed when Park Feet's not in the businesses on Main Street. And most, a lot of...
So...
I'll go out on a limb and say that was a mistake, because knowing what I know about those events, usually don't keep them closed Sundays.
No, we don't. I don't know, I have to look into the staff on what happened, but normally, after Saturday night, after around midnight, we open Main Street for, for traffic to go through.
It's four-thirty, four, four-thirty, yeah, on Sunday.
And some of the other events too, like Christmas parade, for instance, that's our busiest day of the year, pulls Main Street at ten in the morning for a seven o'clock parade.
Yeah.
And you can maybe just put out signs that say, "No parking here after four o'clock."
That's a good one, that's ideally shut down, like, say, mid-afternoon. I know, we've talked about that in the past, you know, there's a desire to shut down a little earlier to get the vendors in, but then you have to seek that balance between getting the vendors in and keeping the business, keeping the street open for the business as long as possible. And so, that's why sometimes, you know, depending on whatever group it is, you know...
Handicap access.
There's no handicap act, I have a lot of...
It says park down past the, um, best, the, the bank and the public parking. It's not, there's no public parking sign down there, and it's not, you know, elderly people.
Right, right.
Handicap people, then no one knows that that's a public parking spot.
I'm wondering if typically it would be a good idea, because I know they did have a Park Feet where they par, had handicap parking at the old guarantee bank, and I don't know how involved that process is. Chief, you might know a little better.
They had it a little bit as well.
Do they? But I would imagine, though, that if you can have that handicap parking there at the, at the guarantee bank for all the events, not just Park Feet, that might be helpful, you know, relative to not walking half a block, or walking an entire block and a half. That's just a thought.
Yes, and we would talk to Hogan, I think Hogan owns that building, so we can, we can talk to them definitely.
See if he'd be willing to...
Seems as if the people holding the events can just shut down the road for as much time as, you know, they'll say, "You want it for all day?" Well...
And so, last month, I had the streets closed for four days. September, we already have two full Saturdays closed. The, the winding takes place at five in the evening, but the streets closed down at ten, and for a business, I mean, Saturdays are huge for me, and like, I have tons of people from out of town, and as soon as you guys block off both sides of the street, it's just, I'm dead. I even, I, like, having the parking closed maybe on one side, but still having through traffic, because as soon as people see barricades, they just give up.
Right, right. So I wonder if there's something we could do, because I know that typically, you know, the events, you know, when you talk about event closure, you know, you know, the question is asked to whoever's putting on the vent chamber, lines, whoever, "Hey, what time would you like the street that's closed?" And that's probably a consideration that often they're not thinking about. And again, we've talked about this before, so, you know, I don't know if that needs to be a point of discussion when somebody is applying for this and saying, "When do we have the street closed? Hey, let's close it up for a week," you know? You know, guys, you know, we've got some considerations for this.
Staff can look into the application form and whether it needs amending, especially regarding timing and so forth, and I'd recommend that you bring your concerns also to the, to the counter, so we're...
I did. They told me to come here. So, yeah, I've done a lot of fairs, because I used to start off with a mobile truck, and load I in other places, and they had like a two-hour period where we were able to load into the proper areas. So I'm not asking never to shut down the streets. I'm just asking to be more considerate when you have an, and then I'm closed all day, you know?
To get closer to that balance between, you know, businesses and the public event. Mark, do you mind if I, I know this is slaughtering protocol, receive some input from another audience member?
They...
I wonder if it's public knowledge.
It is public.
Yeah, we're in the middle of public knowledge, we're kind of getting to discussion.
Okay, then maybe we'll just move on to the next person.
There you go.
So, so, yeah, it's good, that's a good consideration, Mark.
Can we look into, if they're not using the street, say they're using the park, can you use a... can you use a, can you make it a one-way?
Not to public comments, and PD about that.
Yes, it's going to affect, if it's going to affect traffic, the movement of traffic. For Park Fee, we have, you know, PD down there, for One Street, we have the PD down there. Usually any of those events, we have PD down there because it's affecting traffic. Now, if you want to close one side, let's say going towards River Bank, leaving the sidewalk open, or vice versa, I mean, that's something to consider. But again, the vendors are going to be coming in, going out. We just don't want to create a issue where there'll be collisions between vehicles and pedestrians.
Staff will look into it.
Okay, appreciate it. Anybody else like to, Gary?
I apologize for this. I wanted to comment.
Right, thank you.
My response from the council was...
Right.
Well, I'm the chief of the town.
Okay. You could have come up here and said that. Well, I would assume you had a different public comment. Or slightly different public comment. Anybody else from the public here before we go to the phones? Let's go to the phones. Anybody on the phones for public comment? Okay, that's it. So, having said that, Council Communications, Council Member Hagan.
Well, I wanted to first off welcome Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Walz to the team as far as, you know, police officers are concerned, and I hope they enjoy being part of this town. As far as the senior housing, I'm definitely committed to continue trying to find a solution to that. And as far as I'm understanding it, it's a, it's something that you're looking at as far as attainable and fair market housing versus the other. I think there were some words that were, or verbiage that was getting kind of mixed up. The other thing I was hoping to talk about or put out there, and see if I could get your, the council's blessing to go forward with, is going to our rec commission and talking to them to see what their input would be on. A few different things I felt like could upgrade our recreation and potentially help our community be more of a community, as well as get the kids more development with the sports that they play with, or play within. And so that was a combination of a couple things, but I'll go ahead and hit some bullet points on it just to kind of let you know what I'm thinking. But adding in coaching packets to help with teaching a skill, as well as teaching coaches how to coach. Excuse me, upgrading equipment, which is already taken care of, so we just have to implement it. Getting mini-camps going with the high school involvement. I've spoke with members over there, and they are all for it. Getting them to play a role actively with our younger kids, helping to teach them there. Adding in pitching machines at the coach pitch level at a consistent distance, so that we get much more consistent pitching and understanding of how to swing. First, this is for baseball and softball, and I have a secondary plan that I'm working on still for soccer. Also, I spoke with, there was, on the survey, there is interest in having some outside involvement in sports coming into our town, as well as baseball, softball, and soccer being pretty significant as far as what people want to fix in our town, as far as, or upgrade, I should say. And so I spoke with Lance, who runs TPR out in Rainbow, and he was all for potentially being able to bring outside competition into town, but we would still work as a team, so we'd still fly under the banner of Escalon, playing other teams. But we would implement that a little bit older, once they've had time to work with just rec and just that aspect of the game. And as well as kids that wanted to continue to play rec would be allowed to continue to play rec and still be involved in all those competitive-type games. Partnering with private lessons, with local instructors, and creating scholarships for those kids in order for them to be able to, for kids that can't financially afford it, to be able to have the same type of coaching. And some, a group I have not spoke with yet, but I was hoping that could get some input from the fund bunch as far as potentially having announcers at the games. When I was a kid, there used to be a guy named Wayne Gooch that typically would announce the games. And I think that created an environment that was real family-friendly. And last but not least, sorry, I was so long. I think that I've got a strategy to pay for that's not involving really a lot of city funds. It's more outside the purview of the city, but working in lockstep with the city to make it happen. And that's all I have to say for tonight. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Hagan. Councilmember Crummick.
Yeah, thank you, I do have a few things. So, first one, in regards to the MSR, the Municipal Services Review. This is a big thing that is in front of the city that most people don't pay attention to, but it has been a long time coming, we're way overdue. And so I wanted to ask the question to staff tonight. We have a moratorium on annexation, which is hindering the city of Escalon from growing almost in any capacity. We have approved a couple of annexations that are going with this MSR to go to LAFCO. But I wanted to ask staff tonight again for clarification as to where we are as far as our ability to annex and service as, in regards to our wastewater treatment plan. So could I get some clarification on that tonight?
For the most part, when I spoke to our city engineer about it, because it has come up, the Municipal Services Review went to Planning Commission last week.
Right.
It was approved with recommendations, so it will be coming to the council. Obviously not the fifth meeting, because we won't be ready then. We have to put it out for a public hearing. And so it will be the second meeting in September. And then that's going to be the next question that would move forward. And so I've reached out to him to get additional information. But off of the responses, yes, we should be able to open for annexation, but I've asked him to provide additional information so that we have proof, basically, or...
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that. So, the next meeting we're going to have, which is going to be the twentieth of September, is that right?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth. We as a city council will approve the MSR to go back to LAFCO?
We'll approve it at city council level, and then it will go back to LAFCO for its final approval.
And with it?
We've already reviewed it preliminarily. Pointed out any big issues or little issues that need to be addressed, which we didn't have very many. Then it goes through Planning Commission for recommendation, then it comes to council for review and approval, then it goes back to LAFCO for approval.
Okay, and so within that MSR, we have, my understanding, two applications for clarification, the eighteen acres and the property behind Seren Lutheran Church, is that correct?
Correct.
And what about the Murphy's Brothers?
Murphy's Brothers is the eighteen-acre property right there off Brennan Road.
Okay.
Brennan and one-twenty.
What about the eighteen acres off of Escalon Avenue that is not currently within the city limits? That's not on there?
It's a, it's a part of the project. I can't remember if it is still in our, I have to look and see if it's still in our sphere or actually annexed, but because it's city-owned property, we can do, as the city and as the owner, we can develop that property, and it doesn't need to be annexed.
Okay.
It's kind of already given. Now, if we sold it to somebody, then it wouldn't be annexed, and they'd have to go through an annex.
Sure, and here's my point in saying this, and just to communicate to the community and to the rest of the councils, that that moratorium on annexation basically puts an absolute, it puts the brakes on the city of Escalon expanding in any way as far as development for residential or commercial, because what's happened over the last ten or twenty years is we haven't had the capacity. And in the wisdom of the past city councils, we have said, "We're not going to expand because we cannot service what new development comes in." However, at this time, we can service new development. And what comes with new development is new monies, new developer impact fees, things that can improve our parks, things that can go towards a lot of things that we have talked about, yet we cannot fund. Because I want everybody to remember again, this is a very fiscally conservative council, and we run, and we do our best to run this city where, hey, we have a hundred dollars in the bank, we're not going to spend a hundred and one dollars. We're going to spend what we can, but we're not going to go over that, because we want to retain our reserve, and we want to maintain this city in a fiscally conservative with a reserve. And so I believe, and when this comes up in September, we need to really look at that moratorium on annexation, because if we have the capacity, and we have the ability to expand this town, it could provide a lot of benefits and different monies that can do different projects that everybody wants, as far as senior housing, as far as, you know, recreational facilities, things like that. So I wanted to make that point. Wanted to say, congratulations, Gus, thanks for being here. I remember my dad telling me, he's told me multiple times, you probably know my dad. But he said, I don't know what happened, he was like, I don't know, anytime there's a crime or something in Escalon, Gus figures it out. He figures out what the issue was, and he was able to track them down. And so you have a great reputation, I appreciate you being chief. It's good to see the four stars on you, and I'm happy for you, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. With the election coming up, I think it's great that we've got some, some new interests, some new blood that wants to get in here. I would encourage you to do everything you can, get your name out there, get signs out there. I'm running again, I'm just going to kind of see how it goes. I appreciate being up here. I think that, you know, it's an interesting opportunity to be up here to sort of direct the city. And I'm happy that other people are involved and interested in that. So whoever's out there, I encourage you, you know, go for it, you know, full force. Give it your best shot, and, because we all have ideas on how we can make Escalon a better place. I think with that, I, I'm done, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Crummick. Councilmember Bellinger.
A couple things, hats off to everybody who worked diligently and extremely hard to bring off, pull off the Park Fee celebration that we had. I think it went splendid, everybody had a good time, it appeared. Hopefully the vendors did well for us, they'll return next year as well. Congrats on the two new officers, welcome to Escalon, glad you're on the force, thanks for that. Let's see, a quick note for you, Ann, just so you, just to clarify. City council did not turn down the Irwin project, that was a developer that pulled out. Just the Planning Commission or the city council had any votes on that at all, just so you're aware of that. And look forward to seeing everybody at the fish fry, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, again, same here, Officer Rodriguez and Reserve Officer Walz, congratulations on becoming a new part of the force, looking forward to it, and I think it's a great thing. Also, I want to concur with Councilmember Bellinger regarding Park Fee. I think everybody who participated and who helped put it on did a great job, it was a great Park Fee again this year. Special thank you to Debbie Merkin, who I know had to engineer an awful lot of it. She did a fantastic job as well. And, yeah, sorry, apologize for trying to, for taking a liberty with matters presented with the audience. Some of these issues, they get a little difficult though, you know, so, again, you have that balance, you know? You have that balance, right, you know, so... I only kind of started new. I just want to go, well, nobody's going to call me on it, Mark's not going to call me, it's scholars on it. Hey, but yeah, so, yeah, I'm not going to run again. It's been twelve years, twelve years is a long time to be on a council. And, you know, really, in my opinion, I think that whatever you're going to be able to do, whatever you're going to be able to accomplish, you're going to be able to do it in twelve years. And so, and I feel that way, I feel that way, you know, I have no regrets. I thank everybody on this council and everybody in this room, loves this town, wants to keep this town a small town, and small, close to the community. And so there are things you have to do in order to keep that that way. And a big thing is infrastructure. I feel that we've all worked very hard over the years to create that scenario to keep this town a small town for the next several generations, and keep it someplace special. I see an awful lot of new people wanting to run for council out there, and frankly, we need the new blood, you know? You need new ideas, you know? And again, twelve years, it's a long time. So I think that there can be a lot of positive contributions by any, any other people who are running for council this year. And what I know is though, is at their heart, is that they still want to keep Escalon the same special town that we all grew up in, and that we want to have our kids and grandkids grow up in as well. And that's another reason why I'm not going to run, because I'm in the grandkid business now. I'm hoping, I mean, we should have, within the next six months, I should have three grandkids and two step-grandkids, and they're going to be our grandkids too. So that makes five grandkids. And if any of you have grandkids out there, hey, you kind of wanted to devote a little more time to that. So that's where I'm at on that, so... I'm also considering resigning the mayor pro temp position, and the reason for that is to give the community a sense of continuity. Again, I think Ann had mentioned it, and I think our point is very well-taken. There can be an awful lot of change on this council within the next few months. And we need to have some semblance of continuity in the mayor pro temp position. So I think that probably ideally, we probably ought to have a full council, right, to discuss this. What do you think, Mark?
If that's what you prefer, sure, yes.
Well, I mean...
I'd agenda it on the next meeting.
I don't know, what fellow councilmembers would you like to do?
Sure.
Yeah, however you'd like to do it.
Yeah, let's do that. I think continuity is important, I think we are at a unique point where you could see, all offense, guys, four new faces on the council, okay? And so that's why I think that this is probably a good idea for me to, you know, resign that position this time, still be on the council over the next few months, but I'm planning on resigning that position. So yeah, if we can do that on the next agenda, that'd be great, so...
It'll be on...
And having said that, we are going to retire to close session. Thank you all for coming tonight.